All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. It is the February 2nd, 2021 City Council meeting. We are recording the meeting and it's being held electronically due to COVID-19. If members of the public would care to comment on items during public comment periods, you'll need to raise your hand by raising the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you've called in by phone, you can dial *9 to participate and raise your hand. Thank you for helping us to maintain meeting decorum by following these instructions. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
And Councilmember Lipton?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor. Hi.
Hi.
Post? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our first public comment period, public comments on items that are not on the agenda and items that are on our consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first commenter is Paul Crowder. And Paul, if you'll let us know your name and your address, you'll have three minutes to tell us what you want to tell us. So city clerk, if you could unmute Paul for us.
I thought I did unmute him.
Paul, you may be muted on your end. So Paul, I'm not seeing a microphone icon. Oh, now I am. This is good. All right, give it a try.
Very good. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Paul Crowder, 296 South Buchanan Circle in Louisville. I have several questions, following on some questions that I asked and that the city manager and chief of police responded to this summer regarding race in the city of Louisville. Let's see, so based on the response of the chief and the city manager to my questions in June, I believe, it looks like we have the right readership policies and training in the city's police department. And the winter 2020-21 community updates reporting on this topic also shows that we've gone so far as consulting with a Denver consultant and as to how the city should function regarding race, and that's a good thing. So I'd like to ask the following two questions. I'm curious about the actual experience of black and brown-skinned people when they cross paths with the city police department. For example, do black and brown-skinned people avoid Louisville for fear of running into the police? Or do they feel safe here? This goes for both residents of the city of Louisville as well as for people who shop or work here or who simply drive through town on their way somewhere else. I'd also like to know what people's experience is in this regard with city services overall, including all entities which report up to the city manager. So for example, the fire department, Parks and Recreation. My second question, what do we do to assure, and I do mean assure, that there are members of the Proud Boys, Three Percenters, Boogaloo Boys, the KKK, et cetera, working in the police department? I'd like to hear that we act to keep members of heat groups out of the PD and that there are no members of these groups in the police department today. A policy of pre-employment background screening is not sufficient. I'm interested in understanding whether we monitor employees for membership in these kinds of groups. Likewise, for the rest of city services, including the fire department. And thanks for the opportunity to ask these questions.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public care to comment this evening? Seeing now that'll take us back over to agenda, and I'll just remind everyone that our public comment period is open and we do look forward to hearing from people at that time. And it's a place where people can tell us anything they want to tell us, but it's not an opportunity for council to engage in a dialogue because it's not on our agenda. So people wouldn't know we were going to talk about it and they couldn't have come to the meeting to participate. So we take that information in and we can reach out to you after the meeting or at a future meeting, put it on the agenda to have a discussion. So just as a reminder to how we handle those comments and also all of the on the agenda. Are there any council members with pertinent comments this evening? Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just informed by some of my mayors as well as out of town over the weekend that had some break-ins and just a reminder to all of our residents to lock your car doors, lock your houses, make sure that you're doing your part to make it difficult for people to take things out of your cars. It makes it a lot easier for police officers and people have to work harder to take things. But we're a safe community and we're watching out for each other. But just a friendly reminder to keep your stuff safe. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council informational comments from folks? Just if people didn't get a chance to look at it, the most recent mayor's message that you can find on the city website or you can sign up to receive the mayor's messages has some good information to share with people that are 70 and up and pretty soon 65 and up if they need to understand how to get the vaccine here in town. So hopefully, our numbers continue to go up. We're getting close to that 50% mark of people over 70 being vaccinated in the community, which is great. And we're on track and trying to get more and more people vaccinated. So we're on schedule. We're working to get faster. It's all rate limited by the number of doses that the pharmacies and the hospitals are getting at this point in time. Any other comments this evening? All right. Seeing now that takes us to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to announce that we'll be inviting applications for members of the city's new Equity Diversity and Inclusion Task Force starting February 10th. Interested parties can go to www.louisvilleco.gov/edi task force to review the application and other details. Staff will be recruiting members through a variety of communications, including the monthly community update newsletter and quarterly print community update, a press release, boards and commissions, the Boulder County COVID Task Force, attendees from the city's community conversations on racial equity that we held last fall, Engage Louisville, local businesses, community partners like Sister Carmen, Boulder County Housing Authority, and distribution of flyers and contacts for local churches and HOAs. So the application period will remain open from February 10th through March 10th. And we'll also make sure to get that application out to you all as well so you can forward on to folks that you think might be interested as well. And then just to follow up on the mayor's comments, on Friday, the governor provided some change to the phase distribution list for vaccines. And so we do have that information on our city website. And then also, we're hearing that there may be changes to the state dial in terms of the colors and where we are in terms of capacity limits and how we run our facilities. So we're anticipating that may be coming later in the week. We've heard that there will likely not be changes to the capacity levels but allow for communities to move within the colors quicker. So again, we're not sure what that will ultimately look like, but we do anticipate some changes this week, most likely. So we'll let you know as soon as we have that information. And yes, continue to check the city's website because we do try to keep that up to date with the most current information on COVID changes as well as any information that the state is providing on vaccines as well. So thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Balser. That takes us to our regular business this evening. The first item of regular business is Discussion Direction of the COVID-19 Community Recovery and Response and Senior Meal Program. We'll start out with a staff presentation and then we'll take public comment, followed by council questions and comments, and then we'll act on this item tonight. So I believe Director Mosley is going to introduce this topic.
I think I'm going to go through, this is Megan Davis, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to go through kind of just an overview, don't have a presentation. And then we have Director Mosley here, and I'm not sure if Kathy Martin is on, but
She is.
Yes, great, to help answer questions as needed.
Great.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor and City Council. This agenda item is to discuss community need related to COVID-19 impacts. So this is something we've discussed periodically over the last nine months and is a follow-up to our meeting in October. As we're all acutely aware, COVID-19 has had significant impacts on many in our community. And we've discussed at length the impacts on the business community. And tonight, we're going to focus on individuals and families who've experienced economic hardship as a result of COVID-19. While we're starting to see a downward trend in COVID cases and also distribution of the vaccine, it's likely that we'll continue to see economic impacts, including business closures, unemployment, and other impacts related to the pandemic. I think many of you have attended or reviewed the presentation from the Colorado Economic Outlook presentation, where economist Rich Wobelkind has stated in kind of general terms that Colorado will gain jobs in 2021, but we won't be able to make up for the economic losses that are brought on by this pandemic. So we do expect that the impacts are going to continue through 2021. So in discussions with our human services partners, including Boulder County Housing and Human Services as well as nonprofit providers, we understand that there's been significant increase in Louisville residents accessing public benefits and financial assistance through other partners through the duration of the pandemic. A lot of this information can be found in your packet. And there were some, a lot of details provided in the October 6th packet that you can turn to to get a few more details there. During that discussion, council directed staff to identify opportunities to invest in efforts to help address unmet needs within the community resulting from COVID-19. So staff has been working on some opportunities in this area. And tonight, we're recommending two strategies to address these community needs. I also wanted to mention that over the past couple of months, you may have noticed, staff has increased our communication and outreach to the community regarding this issue. We want to ensure that residents know where to get help should they need it during this very difficult time. And as we've heard from a lot of our partners and providers, there are a lot of people in the community who have never had to access assistance or services in the past and may now be experiencing a time when they have to. And so we want to make sure people know where to go. So we have a webpage that's been dedicated to resources for residents in need. And we've also been doing news items to connect people to the webpage. We did a utility insert that went out to all of our utility bill recipients, dedicated to resources for people to connect with. And we also, in the upcoming city newsletter, will be having an article helping residents in need understand where they can receive services. So we really encourage the community to reach out to us if we can help them get connected with organizations who can help provide assistance. So the first program that we want to talk about is the curbside, the city senior curbside meal program. So since March 2020, when our senior meal site transitioned from in-service lunch, in-person lunches to curbside meal delivery service, the meal program has seen unprecedented numbers of seniors requesting lunch up to five days a week. In 2020, the program served 25,793 meals compared to 9,098 meals the previous year. The city receives funding for this program from the Boulder County Area Agency on Aging and also uses city funds and program donations to support the program. With this increased demand, in the 2021 meal site grant is about to run out, leaving a gap in funding unless the city wishes to make changes to the program. At the end of this month, we'll have a funding shortfall of $57,704 if we want to provide the program as it currently is through the end of the grant period, which is June 30th, 2021. And you might remember that we did, at the beginning of COVID, have the curbside meal delivery available seven days and we scaled it back to five days. So it's now a five-day program. There may be some grant funds that the city could pursue, including additional area agency on aging funds or community foundation has a grant cycle coming up. It's just unknown if we'll be able to be successful in obtaining additional funds. So we've laid out a couple of options for city council to consider. Council could approve up to $57,704 in additional funding for the program if staff are unable to secure additional grant funding. Or we could continue to explore and implement program reductions that would reduce the cost of the program. We laid out a couple of options. It could be reducing days when the meals are available or providing a cap on meals or something like that that would reduce the overall number of meals served. So I would, Mayor, I think, do you want to handle these each in individual discussion?
Yes, that's what we'll do. And so we'll take public comments on them separately as well, just so we can get comments on these. So if any members of the public would care to comment on the meal site, this is your opportunity. If you've dialed in by phone, please dial *9 so I can see a raised hand. And if you've used your computer to log in, you can go ahead and raise your hand in the panel at the bottom of the screen. All right, seeing now that takes us over to council questions, comments, and discussions. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my question, first, I have a couple of questions. One, I'm not sure if Megan can answer, or perhaps Kathy Martin. Are we accepting donations of any kind for the lunches when the seniors come up to pick up their lunch? Or are we still just letting them go for nothing?
I'll let Kathy answer that. She can give you the details on how we accept donations.
Hi, yeah, this is Kathy Martin. And we're doing both. Debbie people can give us donations as they drive through to pick up their lunches. But I would say the overwhelming way is people are mailing in checks for donations.
So, but are we getting a significant amount of money through those donations?
Yes, people have been very generous in their donations to support the meal site.
So how much, I'm guessing that that makes up some of the difference, but I'm guessing that there's still a deficit. And I would not be in favor of reducing any services for the meal site program. And I know that Boulder County's donation is using older American Act dollars, so it can't be restricted by anything other than age. So we can't restrict it to Louisville only or anything like that. I would like to continue offering the full program that we are currently offering. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, thank you for the presentation. I think this meal program is very important. If you just talk about 2019, almost 10,000 meals, and those were served at the senior center. And then in 2020, of course, those numbers, about two and a half times the number of meals. So I think it's a very important service. I certainly agree with the comments that have already been made. So I do have a few questions. The number of 57,704 is only through June 30th. Do you have any estimate of what it would be July through December?
Kathy, do you want to give them the details about how that grant runs?
From the Yeah, so the grant that we receive, it's a fiscal year grant. So the current grant cycle that we're in will end June 30th, 2021. So we will reapply for grant funds in another month or so. And we get reimbursed at a different rate when we're doing curbside meals versus in-person meals. And so hopefully, we'll know more information when it comes time to put in our grant application to determine how much money we'll ask for if we're doing curbside, in-person, or a hybrid of both. And then the grant award will be starting July 1st, 2021, obviously through June 2022.
Okay, that was very good information. Thank you. But I guess the question is, do you anticipate that we will need to come up with additional general fund money to support this program? Or do you believe, you know, given the numbers that we're seeing right now, that the grant funding that we potentially get starting July 1st will cover the additional costs through the rest of 2021?
Um.
Or is that an unfair question at this point?
I think I'm just hesitating because we just don't know if we'll be doing curbside and, you know, keep the 100-plus meals a day or the in-person. And so I think if I had to guess, I would say we probably will be able to secure enough grant funding from July through December.
Okay. So Kathy, you ventured into my second question. You know, this is another unfair question, but when do you believe we're targeting getting back to serving the meals at the senior center?
Um, we are, you know, so for the Brooks Cafe, we would follow restaurant guidelines for in-person dining. And so we're based off of the capacity of the Brooks Room where it's served and with the six feet, you know, social distancing requirements. So right now, you're looking at kind of one senior per round table in that room. So it's just not very inviting right now. We're hoping, you know, as we get moved into yellow and then hopefully into the next color as well, that we get more capacity. But until we get more capacity, our inclination is to stay curbside. But we would love to have some form of in-person dining by this fall.
Okay, well, I mean, I completely agree with the limitations. When we get to green, I guess I would expect us to be doing, you know, in-person meals in the senior center.
When we get into green, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah. I agree.
The last question I have is, can you tell me what the current price is? Something like $3 a meal or something like that?
The current price?
The price, not the cost.
The price that the caterer is charging us?
No, no, the price that a senior would pay if they were
Oh, I see, sorry.
in-person dining in the senior center.
Yeah, it's a recommended donation based off of age. So that it's not a set price. We just do recommended donation.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great questions, everybody. The next set of questions or more comments are from Councilmember Lay.
Yes, thanks. I wanted to echo Councilmember Fahy's comments earlier on. This program, as far as the folks that have contacted me about it and having done some volunteering, but observing it over the years, it's incredibly, incredibly important and it's run well. It, I think, has had a really good reputation. It's safe and hearty and gets people out, frankly. And that's, all those things are huge. And now, having had parents who have been cooped up, not in Louisville, but elsewhere, for a year, there's a piece of this program, which is really good for people's mental health, too. The fact that they're getting out at all and even interacting a little, I think, is enormously beneficial to the community. I think it'll be so much better when they actually can meet again in person. But I agree with Councilmember Fahy that we don't want to cut this back. We want to make sure this runs well and that we do whatever we can. We've been careful, I think, on council to want to support our businesses and to support our students that are going back to school. This is a group of people we owe the world to. So I'd be very disappointed in us if we didn't try to do what we need to do at whatever level we need to do it, but at least keep the program going and to the extent that we're getting more demand for it than we need it. I have one question, which is really a little bit tangential to this, which is, to the extent that people come by and picking up their lunches, are you noticing needs that you can fill or that you can help the seniors that are coming by, maybe with different problems in addition to their hunger for that day and that they're asking about and kind of stopping, if you will, to ask about procuring services from some other part of county government, city government? When they come through, do you get very much of that? Or is it come in, put your money down, and get your meal and you're off?
Um, it's a little bit of both. We do have a lot of requests for services or for resources. We, of course, you know, vaccine information has been the number one question lately. We regularly put additional information into their lunch bags that we're giving out that include resource information for them. We did a whole resource fair in the fall where participants got a whole bag of resource information. You know, it's not like if they were dining in person, but I would say, you know, people are feeling like they can ask questions. And we do have our resource coordinator out there talking to the cars as they pull up each week. So we are trying to capitalize on that contact time as well.
Are you finding any trends about what folks are asking about that may not be what you had anticipated?
Um, you know, housing is always a big question. You know, like I said, vaccines has been the big question. And of course, when is the senior center going to reopen is the big question.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I just want to say that I really appreciate Councilmember Fahy, Mayor Protem Maloney, and Councilmember Lay's comments. This is a very important program to me. When I think about the kind of the human services type programs that the city provides, this ranks among the most important. And in a time when seniors are increasingly isolated and struggling potentially to make ends meet, I think it's particularly important. So I'm very much in favor of continuing the program at current service levels. And, you know, we'll absolutely hope that the staff can fill the budget shortfall with grant funding. But if that can't happen, then I would love to, you know, to support increased funding from our general fund.
Thank you. All right, so council, there appears to be consensus that we would like to support the program through June at the nearly $60,000 additional funding amount. I think we should give direction to the deputy city manager to, you know, we got some additional news today around potential FEMA funds that are going to be retroactive through the last year. And we're all very hopeful for a COVID package being passed. So if we do find additional funds from federal government that could cover this cost, make sure that we seek out reimbursement if possible.
And Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on Dennis's question. Our published recommended donation amount is $3.50 for seniors 60-plus.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Manager Davis, is that enough direction on this agenda item? And then, you know, in June or July, if we need to have an additional discussion, if we don't get our entire Older Americans Act, we can come back and have some future discussion at that point.
Absolutely. We appreciate the direction and I appreciate Kathy and sharing all of her experience and wisdom and data. Thanks for being here, Kathy. Okay, so the second item that we'd like to discuss in response to community need is the creation of a COVID-19 Response and Recovery Community Assistance Program. It's kind of a mouthful, but as we discussed back in October, Sister Carmen Community Center is the southeast Boulder County's basic needs provider and family resource center. And they have experienced and reported to us a sharp increase in Louisville residents seeking services. The greatest increase in need for assistance has been around financial assistance for housing, such as rental and mortgage assistance, utility assistance, including heat, water, and internet, and food assistance. including heat, water and internet and food assistance. There has been some additional funding to address these needs. The CARES Act provided some funding through Boulder County that went to several of the nonprofit providers and made some investments in supporting the need. Most of that had to be spent in 2020 and unfortunately was spent before the extension was put in place for those funds. Because it happened so late. And there were some investments that were made in things like non-perishable food items that could be extended into 2021. So those are some great additional resources we have in the community. The state has also invested some funds in housing and rental assistance and for other basic needs. So there are some increased resources, but even with this influx, there still are additional needs that won't be able to be met as the impacts of COVID-19 continue to, to drag on. As we suspect that they, they will for many people. So staff is requesting city council support for a new program called the COVID-19 Response and Recovery Community Assistance Program. Under this proposal, the city would provide funding for certain qualified Lewisville residents in need of rental and housing assistance. Utility assistance, including energy and internet or wifi. Food assistance, mental health supports and other basic needs for assistance. The city would partner with the Sister Carmen Community Center to serve as the program administrator, which is a similar structure to the city's water utility assistance program. However, this program would be administered separately. In your packet, I've provided a statement of procedure. It's on page 127 of your packet, and this outlines the program expectations for this funding and this program. So in general, the program guidelines would include that Sister Carmen Community Center would serve as the program administrator in providing the following. They would provide administration of the program on behalf of the city of Lewisville. We do not have the staff capacity or really the expertise to operate a direct program like this. So this is why we're seeking an experienced partner that can help with this. The program and funding will be available only to city of Lewisville residents who demonstrate the need for rental or housing, including mortgage assistance, utility assistance, including energy and internet or wifi. Food assistance, mental health assistance. And family support services. Sister Carmen has indicated that it's, it's most likely that the vast majority of these funds would be used to support the first two that are proposed rental or housing assistance and utility assistance. That's the area where there's the biggest gap in resources as aligned with the need that, that we're seeing. However, it's good to have, I think, the ability for them to respond to needs in these other areas, should those gaps arise? And should, should we have needs around things like mental health and family supports? So determination of eligibility would be provided by the program administrator. And as a general rule, Sister Carmen would utilize all available local, state and federal funding directed to supporting COVID-19 related needs before accessing the city of Lewisville funds. However, there may, may be times when a state or federal source isn't necessarily appropriate for the need of a specific individual or family. And so they may use city funds as a more flexible funding source. We have, would ask them to provide quarterly updates summarizing the services provided to Lewisville residents with city funding, including the number of clients served, the amount of funding provided and the types of services. At this time, staff is requesting city council approval for $50,000 to get this program going. And I'm happy to answer questions. And also Suzanne Crawford, who's the executive director of Sister Carmen Community Center, is also here this evening and could provide additional information or answer questions as well.
Thank you very much, City Manager, Deputy City Manager Davis. That'll take us to public comment on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment, go ahead and raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, it takes us back to council discussion, questions, comments or action. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Oh, I thought Counselor Lay had his hands up, so.
It was, it was held up from before. It had never gone down.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to jump ahead of my colleague. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. You know, the discussion we had in October, I think what you've worked on certainly fits the bill. You know, the COVID-19 that has had a lot of impact on our residents. And working with Sister Carmen administering the program, I believe is absolutely the right thing. So I'm certainly in support of this. I do have one question and maybe it's a little nitpicky question, but at the very end of the, on page 128, it says the city anticipates the, it'll be in place through 2021. Should we put a end date on this with the opportunity to come back and revisit that? Or should we leave it open-ended? And I, I don't know. I don't, I think that's rhetorical for my colleagues more than for you. Deputy City Manager, just, just a thought I want to put out there, but I, I'm certainly in support of this program. I think it's exactly what we are asking for to make sure we meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for, maybe for Megan, for the Deputy City Manager, might be for Sister Carmen. I noticed in the, in the statement, in the packet, in the, on page, well, it's in the statement of the departmental policy and procedure, that recipients of city funds must be residents of city Lewisville and provide proof of lawful presence in Colorado. Can you explain, explain that a little bit? Deputy City Manager Davis, what, what constitutes? Proof of lawful presence?
Sure. I, I would ask Suzanne about the exact documentation that would be required, I think, and, and also. City Attorney Kelly, who I believe is on, we did have discussions about this. And, you know, I believe that this is consistent with the requirements for using our city funds for documented residence. And that this is something I know there's been discussion at the state legislature about changing this requirement in state statute, but it's still in place at this time. And so this is consistent with that requirement, you know, per the state of Colorado. So Suzanne, I, I, I know you have, you, you require this documentation for other programs if you want to comment on what that looks like.
Suzanne, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. First, I just want to assure anyone that might be concerned that, that someone who isn't documented will still get services from Sister Carmen Community Center. We have other funding for which we don't have this requirement. So we, we don't turn folks away if they can't show proof of documentation. But yes, we, there are certain funding streams that require proof that someone is a legal resident. Our advocates know what to look for as far as what documentation will, will suffice for that. So it's something that we've had to do before and we can certainly do in this situation. But that does not mean that we won't serve someone who doesn't have that documentation. We'll just use a different funding source.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you very much. I'm very much in support of this and I, I really appreciate, by the way, the work that the city staff did, Deputy City Manager Davis. It's really exciting. This is the kind of program that I think we talked about back in October. You know, and it's, you know, I mean, means tested, you know, with a trusted partner, putting significant dollars towards folks in our Lewisville community who need help. So I really, really appreciate the work and happy to support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will also voice my thanks to Sister Carmen Center, to the city staff for getting this program going and providing the, for the needs of our community. My only question was, is pretty little. I'm just wondering if this is in addition to the, the money that we've already designated to the Carmen Center for utility payments? I mean, I, I think the city is, is historically has designated a certain amount every year for utility bills for Lewisville residents. So is that coming out of this first and then they access this new sum or how, how does that all work?
Deputy City Manager Davis, will you address that for us?
Yes, yes, I'm happy to. It's, it's a very good question. So we, we kind of now have three pots of money with Sister Carmen. The utility bill assistance for our water utility bills. So that's specific just for, you know, basically city water utility. That's a separate pot of funding and we have an arrangement where we have kind of given a, like a $5,000 allocation at a time. We just recently replenished that, I think, within the last month or two because we were seeing that accessed a little bit more frequently than we have in the past. And so we, we have kind of regular communication with them about the status of that. And when they need additional funding, you know, they can ask and we can come to council if we need to. But over the course of this year, we've gotten direction from you all to just kind of keep that, replenishing that as needed. So that's a separate pot of funding. I will also mention that we provided this year as a part of the nonprofit funding awards, $9,000 to Sister Carmen. And so those dollars were just, I think we just sent out those checks recently. And so this will be separate, specific to this kind of COVID-19 recovery program.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay?
Yes, I would echo the, the support of Sister Carmen. I, I just think, again, what an organization. And Suzanne, I hope that you will go back and give our best wishes to the folks and, and let them know how valuable our relationship with your organization is. Because they have come through and do their job very well. And I'm, I'm very glad and been involved in that initial $5,000 replenishable grant piece. I'm, I think we all appreciate that having you all administer that, very, very smart move for our city. Cause we just don't know how to do it and you guys really do. And, and so, thanks. I, I guess I also want to underscore the, just the work that I know a number of us have done in affordable housing. It's, it's crucial that we keep people in their housing if we can do it. That's kind of the, at least based on the information that I've gotten over time, housing first related programs, those, the housing and rental payment assistance is absolutely critical. And I'm glad to see that that's a top priority. And obviously we don't want people to freeze to death. And, and we need them on the internet. So those, those things are all there. And the other categories, I think, speak to important needs too. The food assistance, the mental health support, which I, I constantly worry about because of the isolation that so many people have had to endure alone or with maybe partners that are violent or who are not especially helpful in, 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 in being good partners in a small space. I guess my question really is a question about how, where we came up with the $50,000 piece. And that may be a question for the Deputy City Manager. And, you know, I, I, that's, that's my first question. I have a follow-up, but I, that's my first question.
Deputy City Manager Davis?
Sure. You know, there, there, I, I'd love to say there was a formula around that, but there, there really, there really wasn't. You know, I, Suzanne and I had a couple of conversations about need. I think one thing that, you know, we learned from the utility assistance program, the Waterville Utility Assistance Program is that this structure that worked for us with that program allows for flexibility. And so I think it gives council flexibility if you would like, if you, you know, if there is increased need, if we get the reports back from Sister Carmen, that there's increased need. This isn't necessarily a traditional, you know, contract. It's, it's more of them kind of operating the program. So I think this provides flexibility to go in, you know, a different direction if it's needed. And I thought, you know, we thought 50,000 was a, was a good starting point and not knowing how things are going to evolve in the next couple of months. Not knowing, as the mayor pointed out earlier, if we are going to get additional federal funding. If we're going to get, whether it's FEMA funding or if there is a, you know, second type of a coronavirus relief fund or CARES Act funding that would allow for additional assistance for this type of basic needs too. So I think it gives us some flexibility to be able to, to move in a different direction if we need to.
And I, I think what I would be. This, this kind of dovetails a little bit with the Mayor Protem's comment about, you know, sunsetting it. I, I think what I would say is I would want to keep the, the amount of funding open, not because we're looking to throw a bunch of money or, or, or. Or the opposite, mostly to just main monitor to see whether this kind of aid is really doing what we want it to do. I mean, we're doing this in connection with grants that we're making to businesses in town. We ought to be doing it, you know, to make sure what, what we're, what we're accomplishing is what we set out to accomplish. And if more money is needed, we want to know that. And if, you know, we're overspending or putting too much money in there, then that's, there'll be other opportunities to do something better with the money. But I, I think, you know, we're trying to be, I, I think nimble with what we're, what we have. And, you know, I, I think what we're doing here is, is spot on. So I guess, you know, and, and I think the, ask me or ask me, I would ask, how is it? Or what do you anticipate Deputy City Manager? Are going to be the, the kinds of input that's going to be coming back to us to help us evaluate this program as it goes on, if we prove it?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we've asked for quarterly reports and I, right now, the way we structured it is that we would do a dispersment of half of the funds right now and then this, the second half in June. So I, my thought was that in May, we would have a report from Sister Carmen about how the funding is being used. And if at that time we hear that, you know, all the funding was used by the end of April, because the need was so great in this area, then we could, you know, either provide for that dispersment the second half more quickly and then come back to you if there's a need for additional funding to support the program. That sounds reasonable. That, you know, that's kind of the course of action that I thought we might be able to take.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have a lot to add. Just want to voice my support beyond my vote. That, you know, I think this is really important. We, we're doing a lot for a lot of different pieces of our community. And I think this basically direct assistance, I, I obviously it's through a third party and that's what we're talking about. But I'm really trying to get at the people that are in the greatest need is, is incredibly important. And, you know, focusing on rent, gas, water, food, there couldn't be, you know, better use of, of dollars than those, you know, basic needs. So there's a lot of great comments already. I'll, I'll keep my time short, but just in, in total support of this. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So there's consensus from council to move forward with the program as outlined by staff. And so it sounded like there was also consensus to follow up if there's additional need or if we need to be more concrete on terminating the program and doing something else or a deadline. Mayor Protem Maloney, do you feel like that sufficiently answered the question you put out for council around adding a hard date in there or leaving it as it's written?
I, I don't think we need a hard date in there, given the discussion. I just want to make sure, I mean, there was really good comments. I put it out there to sort of spur those. And Counselor Lay really kind of talked about, we may need less, we need even more. You know, it's a matter of maybe touching base again, maybe summertime to see where we're at to, so we understand. But we want to meet the needs of the community. I just, I'm always reticent to want to sign on for things that don't have an ending. So, but I, but I think this council understands that. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. All right. So we've given direction and I see the hands up. I just want to remind everyone. I just want to remind everyone, we have three agenda items that are full of council direction. And so try to keep them tight and I'm going to go through the people who would like to come in a second time. Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, and I'll be brief. My question was one for probably Suzanne, which is what's your administrative cost typically or likely to be for this, for this program?
Well, our overall, thank, thank you. First off, I want to say thank you for your kind comments earlier and I will pass those along to our staff and volunteers. And our overall administrative costs for our last fiscal year, which ended June 30th, was 6.9%. So I expect that, that this program will be similar. Now, full disclosure, part of the reason for that is because we take in a lot of in-kind donations of food. So that, that's part of the reason.
That I, I think that's a selling point. I'm just, I'm suggesting that might be a good thing to remind us of because that's.
We're pretty darn efficient.
It gives, it gives us a lot of confidence in that. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Fagin.
Yes, I just wanted to quickly add my compliments to the Carmen Center. Also, we've been supportive of you for, I think, 30, 40 years now that we've been in Lewisville. My one question is, in addition to giving money to the Carmen Center, could we also support some of the other organizations in Lewisville like the Community Food Bank or particularly the Lewisville Community Food Bank?
Thank you, Councilmember Fagin. So on our agenda this evening, let me just make sure that this falls within the title. And yeah, so community needs resources related impact. So we certainly could consider other programs outside of this. We did do the nonprofit grant program that council approved on the consent agenda, which gave additional funds to the Community Food Share, I believe. And there was consideration of the other organization that you've discussed. And so we could bring that back for further consideration. We did recently vote on that. And I think we've given staff sort of open direction that we need to continue to monitor community needs and bring forward programs that we can administer and that we have the capacity to do. So I, I think staff understands that we have an open invitation for that kind of thing. Does that suffice for this evening or would you like council to discuss it further?
That, that's okay for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Maloney?
I was just going to answer that question. This was discussed at the end of the finance committee meeting as being a future agenda item and understanding some of those that we need to address. So I think that the door is open to have that discussion, although there's nothing on our agenda at this point in time. But I, I think we need to be looking at all those programs to take care of our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is the pavement management update. So we will have a staff presentation. And I think on this one, because it is a lot of different topics and we'll want to have council questions and comments throughout, what I'll ask is that we do public, we'll take public comment about midway through the presentation on this agenda item. But council questions will have throughout the presentation as each topic arises. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Kober for a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just doing some screen arranging so I can see everything. It's been, I think, about two years since we did a true pavement update. We had a presentation last year and we talked about the paving we were going to do. Really didn't talk about condition indexes and all that. So I know with this current council makeup, we've got some paving gurus and we've got some paving grasshoppers. And I hope by the end of this conversation, you all be paving gurus. And it'll help everybody talk the same language as we be forwarding the future with plans around what our pavement condition index, what our goals are and how much that costs. And make sure you understand the investments we're making with the community's dollar. So just getting my keys working here. Hold on. Okay. So the first part of this, if you kind of looked ahead in the pack, it is just talking about the pavement condition, condition index methodology and how we view it in Lewisville. Essentially overall, it's a system. It was developed by the Air Force for runways to take care of runways. And over time, it was expanded to communities to take care of their paving systems, whether it's asphalt or concrete. So essentially there's a methodology where you look at the types of things happening in the street, the cracks and how wide they are. And you add all those things up and you get to a score. And the scores have been given names. And if this is your first time coming into pavement condition indexes and pavement management, you could look at a 40 and get really, you could, you could get PCI anxiety. And in some cases, you'll go out and look at a street at a 40 and that street, you'll say, yeah, we should repave that. And in many cases, you go out to a street that's a 40 and you'll say like, I don't, I don't know if I'd spend my money here. And in a non-COVID year, we would give you a all expenses paid trip together in a government issued van from the city to do a field trip and look at paving to help your eyes calibrate to a score. You can't do that this year, but I am available one-on-one if anyone wants to take this deeper and look at some things in the field. But for now, we'll stay on paper. So anyways, we score all these streets and then those go into a toolbox of a lot of different things. We have various treatments we use to fix the streets. Whether that's just crack sealing a crack or whether that's kind of a slurry seal where we, we kind of put a new surface on top. It's like a really thin paint job with, with a rough texture or we completely rebuild the road. And the name of the game is really to get the right treatment at the right time. And if you can do your preventative maintenance on your best streets first, that's where your dollar spent now gives you a good return on your investment. And if you wait too long on a street, then your cost obviously gets a lot more to reconstruct it. So all this is about just taking ongoing measurements of the streets, getting in there, doing the work at the most optimal time at the least cost, and then continually reassessing that to see where we're trending and to make sure we're putting the right amount of money in. So when we do get actual measurements in the field, that happens by a van full of sensors. And we use IMS. This is the company we have used the last few years. We just have been using them for, we use them the first time and we continue to use them for consistency. They have good experiences. Basically all they do is measure roads and they have knowledge of the asset management system we utilize. So they can take their analysis, analysis and load it into our system. So this fall, after we're done paving, we will do another update and get actual field measurements. Now you might say, well, what do we do in between? Well, we, like I just said, we have an asset management software. It's called Lucidity. It has a module. So this module has knowledge of every street, the size of the street, the, has the data from when we took the field measurements. And then it kind of, it works off of lifecycle curves for each type of street we have in the city. And it degrades in theory, the streets over time through modeling, iterative modeling to give us like theoretical scores a year later, two years later, five years later, whatever. So that's how we do our forecasting. Now, I will say the model is really smart. It does a lot of calculations that we can't do by hand and that's great. But at the end of the day, we take the results out to the field with our entire staff and we review all these streets with our eyes. And oftentimes we make adjustments to what the model says because theory and reality don't always align. So we just improve the results of the model with our own eyes as well. One of our challenges with COVID in 2020 is we're onboarding new staff that were doing our modeling right at the same time we were doing our six-year budgeting, right at the same time we were getting kicked out of City Hall and sending everybody home. So I will say our six-year program was a real challenge for us to pull together with new people and all the stuff going on and we got it done. But when you do look at our six-year plan versus some things we'll be proposing over the next, this year and even maybe next year, we did move some things around. And that's because we were able to finally get out into the field together in the summer once we had a better understanding COVID and there was a better comfort level of people just being around each other. So again, I talked about, we're trying to put the right treatment at the right time. Essentially, you're just trying to do a booster shot on the road. So the graph on the left is a little more broad categories of how you could look at that PCI index. The first graph I showed you a few slides earlier shows a lot of different categories. But essentially those can be summarized in certain range of scores is going to be really high cost to fix. Certain range of scores is going to be really low cost. And then there's score in the middle where it's generally going to be some, some cost between those two. And you really got to look, go out and look at the street to figure out what you need to do. But as you can see in the graph on the right, you build a road, over time it deteriorates. You go, you do something to it, the condition goes up and you just rinse and repeat that cycle over time. At some point in time, you've, you've given it enough booster shots that it's kind of done with getting ongoing maintenance and it does need reconstructed. But I mean, that, that takes, that's a long period of time. So our maintenance program where we're doing crack seal and slurry seal and chip seal and on the busier roads, hot chip. We understand that that is not, that is not a brand new road. We understand it's not like when someone first moved into their new subdivision and they got a new road and it was that nice, smooth, brand new pavement. People love that and it's gorgeous and it drives nice and it's smooth for skateboards and kids to play on. But it's really expensive to renew a road like that every 10 years on an arterial or every 20 to 30 years on a residential street. So we picked these other treatments like the slurry seal, the crack seal, the chip seal, the hot chip because they're very cost effective. A chip seal is quarter of the price of repaving a road. So it's a big difference. We understand some of these chips ravel. We understand that sometimes we get a contractor that comes in and they don't do as good a job as they should have. And then we have to come in a year later and do a little more work. In the end, that's covered by warranty and you're actually getting a better product because lately what they've been doing, if they don't get it right the first time, is they put a slurry seal on top of a chip seal. This happened over at Nighthawk. It also happened on many of the, our chills like Dillon Road. And we actually end up getting a better product for the same price. So it's not always bad when that happens, but it is inconvenient. And we do understand the public at times is very irritated with the chip. But again, it's 25% of cost of doing a smooth road every time. Our target network average that we go for in Lewisville, it's been decided by this council and roughly 2015, 16 is a 75. No street should go under 35 when we look at the PCI. And so we have these rules programmed into the software and we tell it, hey, run for 75. Tell us how much money we need each year to get to 75 over time. And then also if anything's sliding under 35, get it scheduled in the plan. So that's what the software does iteratively for us. When we look at where we were when we started this endeavor in 2015 and where we're at now, and I would say everywhere I say 2021 forecasted in this presentation, it's really the end of 2020 because this score is actually going to be better after 2021. So everything that says 2021 is really after we paved last year. But in 2015, we were at a 64, the end of last year, closing out the year, we were at a 69. And like I said, we're going to be updating the survey this fall. It takes a long time for them to process the data for us to upload it into our asset management system. And then it takes time to review it. There's usually one or two things we find that need to be errors that we find. So it takes time. So I say February and March because we just need time to process and understand the data before we're ready to talk to you about it. But we'll actually be doing the survey in probably like October-ish. So everyone sees the van running around and then they think, you know, the next day results are ready, but that's not true. And I'm just trying to set expectations. Right now, the model currently predicts we're going to hit 75 around 2025, 26 or 27. Based off how our six years CIP is set up, it's kind of on a, a certain glide path. And you can always spend more to bump that up, those years up sooner. And I'll talk about that in another slide. I get this comment sometimes of, well, Kurt, I feel like the last time you talked to us, you told me I was going to get to 75 a lot sooner than you're telling me today. I would like to verify, did go back to my presentation for January 15th, 2019. With all of you, I believe we were in the library, community room. And I believe Councilman, Councilman Maloney was asking about this question. And I had a slide that said we're going to get there in 2028. So two years later, I'm saying we're a little better than where we said we would be two years ago. I think part of that is we've, we've been really aggressive with these maintenance treatments that are cheaper and will get your roads looking better sooner than later for less money. So we're able to do more with the money we have. I would also offer up the mother nature's been really kind since we've started this program. We've had a lot of dry winters. And you can see what happens when you have a really snowy winter like we did last year and you, and you saw Cherry just kind of let go on us and we had to shove that into the program. So it is nice when mother nature helps us out as well. So this data sheet is just kind of another comparison and it's kind of all the gory details from what IMS would say to us if I invited them in and they talked. The bars you're looking at are actually bars from the 2018 survey. They're not current bars. But essentially anything under 35, we're moving all those blue and red bars on the left side of the graph, up to the right side of the graph. And slowly over time, all these bars are slowly moving to the left. So you can see we've cleared out most everything to the left. We've still got streets coming at us that are deteriorating over time. And that's where we need to be aggressive with those maintenance treatments. They really work well in that fair to excellent category. And again, that's going to continue to help your score climb fast, but not spend as much money. So I talked about what our scores were in the different years. When we talked with IMS, they'd say our client, their client average is 60 to 65. When they had done a presentation for council in 2015, they kind of said they had recommended 70 as a target. And again, as Lewisville, we've decided we want to be at the 75 range. As you can see on the right side, we've cleared backlog. As you can see, we were at 11% backlog when we started this journey together with more funding. And we're down to less than 1%. IMS says you should target less than 12%. If you get more than 12%, the roads start to get so far behind that it's almost starts to become financially infeasible to catch up. So, you know, when we're at 11%, the city wasn't putting a ton of money into roads. You know, we weren't in great shape. We weren't in a crisis. We were just kind of riding the line. And so you can see over on the right side, we've moved a lot of streets up into the excellent range and that percentage continues to increase. IMS had recommended a 15 to 25% range for streets in the excellent range. And now we're at the 28.4% or let's just call it 28% range. Now, when we look at all the different streets, you can categorize them into arterials, your McCaslin's, your South Border Roads. You can categorize them into collectors, your Pine Streets, your Cherries, your Tyler's, Washington's, and then all your locals. So when we really started investing heavily, we were in downtown. We were a lot of residentials. We also attacked several of the arterials and McCaslin, South Border Road via Appia. And those scores were riding pretty well in 2018, but the collectors were lagging behind. And as, as according to plan, we talked about, we had the collectors coming up. We were going to hit the collectors. So as you saw last year, we really got pine in good shape. We filled in the piece on Cherry. We, this year, you see we're hitting other collectors like the Centuries, the Centennials, the Tyler's. So we're really hitting that collector section of streets or category. You'll, you'll see us continue to hit the residentials. I would say the next five years, the arterials will start coming do again. So you'll see them. They, they still look pretty decent. We've cracked sealed them several times. There's some areas we've had to patch. But they'll start to let go and that's part of the natural degradation. And we'll get them on the list of things to renew. And that's just the natural evolution of a street. So it's hard to believe we're coming back around to arterials, but typically arterials, you only get 10 years out of your major treatment. And we'll try to probably stretch that to 12, but probably about that 12 mark, you're going to start chirping at me that they need to get done. And if we need to do them sooner, we will. But that's just kind of a quick way to think about how you. But that's just kind of a quick way to think about how you hit the different categories of streets. So again, your arterials every 10 to 12 years, collectors, you probably get 20, 15 and locals 20 to 30 years. And you're doing all these little incremental maintenance things in between. But that's the long lifespan of major improvement on those categories of roads. This is just a graph, it was a graph that was in the 2015 IMS report. It kind of suggested, or what it's saying is on the left side of the graph is your PCI index. On the right, on the bottom of the scale is annual budget to be invested every year. So it's basically saying if you invest, oh, say $3 million per year, uh, over a period of say five years, you go up and you come across, you should be at a PCI of 75. So this is what we're investing in 11, 12 and 13. So we scored at a 64 when we originally did this. And this is where we had been investing. So we're getting a slightly better score than what our investment would suggest. 2015, we amped it up a little bit. That's where there's a, I think a really good conversation at the council level has said, this is not what we want to be. This is, we want to be better. Our streets are not acceptable. And then you can see the jump in 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and then 2021. So we've climbed up, we're funding at those levels from that original conversation. Um, yes, there should be escalation in there, but this was just a straight, simple way to kind of show what you need and where it gets you. Um, this curve here is the model. So it's different scenarios we ran in the model. Um, and what it tells us at these different funding levels. So the blue line is currently what's in the model. We will, we will adjust that over time to bring it further up. Um, but it's kind of what you're seeing is we're staying on that aggressive timeframe to continue to get to 75. And then the model was starting to kind of run out of things that it really needed to do. And so it starts to slack off and we need to start forcing streets in to force that condition up a little faster. Um, but essentially there's not, we're still in this, um, at the bottom of the scale is the, our annual each year. So this is showing that um, in 2027, we're, whether we put in what we, the model shows or a little bit more than where we're at on average. Um, you know, we're going to get to 75. The gray line right here is actually what we have in the six year plan. So again, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to say is the modeling isn't perfect right now. And it's where we want it for the next several immediate years. And we'll still need to work on the, those back years, those last three years. But the model shows us a little better, our funding level shows us a little better than what's in the model right now. And if you wanted to say, get that 75 to happen faster than these numbers up here are just suggesting, we probably need to throw another 500,000 to a million dollars per year. And that would get you to 75 by maybe 2025 instead of 2027. Now, will you be able to see that with your eyes when you spend that much more? I don't know, I don't think so. You'll see it in the scores on paper, but to the naked eye, um, I don't think so. I think this, these years, 21 through 24, we're aggressively attacking um, some streets that still need done that haven't quite gotten up to the standard. So I'd say we're getting out of downtown. We're starting to get into different areas, uh, north in the city, middle of the city. CTC is a big area we're going to get into next year. But we really are, we have addressed a lot of areas where pavement didn't look great. And we're continuing to do that. So I mean, I guess you could boost these early years and get some of those streets done faster. And ultimately you get there faster. But again, as you get to the tail end of this plan, I just think there's a diminishing return on what the eye is going to see. And at that point, you're just kind of, your, your focus is your score on paper and not necessarily what the eye can see. When you give us money to spend, know that 60% of it's going to asphalt. 40% is going to concrete. A lot of the concrete hasn't been touched for a long time. As we get through the city, the concrete ratio should start to go away because we have updated a lot of the concrete and fixed the crack concrete or updated uh, handicap ramps. So as we get farther into the program, maybe late in the twenties, maybe early thirties, then you'll start to get more bang for your buck because you'll just be spending on asphalt. So these other lines just show what the model shows us getting to when you're investing at 3.8 million per year, at 4.2 million per year, at 4.7 billion dollars per year. Now, again, we're overperforming, mother nature's been nice. We've also um, again, gone more aggressive on cheaper maintenance that gets us similar product. When we talked in 2019, I had said you'd need between 4.2 million dollars per year to 5.8 million dollars per year, which would have been, you know, you can see how this pattern's going. These lines would have had a steeper curve. So you can still go for that. Again, you'll get some of these streets done sooner that still might not look great. But um, on papers, you get to the back end of that program, the eye may not see what the investment's being put in, but I've.
That's great, Director Coward, that is, is well, very well covered. Let's move on.
Okay, sorry. This just shows your under 35, your backlog. It's, there's a percentage there because some streets are popping up in a year and then we're getting them scheduled in the following year. Some streets are unscheduled because they might be a campus drive. And we know there's development there and we don't want to spend city money on something a developer may um, redo. So we're just trying to keep on spending money happening from um, we don't want to spend money that's going to have work there. You guys don't have to make any decisions today, but I'm trying to just show you what we've got out on the street. So when we talked last year, late or early in the year about the CIP program, you said, do the base plan plus, plus we want to do more in case pricing's good. So we've done the base plan, which are the solid lines. And then we've done the dash lines, which are alternates that we've thrown in after looking around the city. Um, so your base bid's about $4 million. When we collect all the various funding available in 21 and funding that's left over from last year. We had a big program last year's around $7 million. So had roughly 700, 800,000 in contingency. We didn't spend all that. So when we bring all our unspent forward, there's about 4.6 million in paving available. And um, and then the alternates that we've thrown in are about 1.4 million dollars. So if you want to do everything on the map in here, we need another $800,000. Again, these are just engineering estimates right now. Um, once we get bids in, which we'll get concrete in on the 11th of this month, paving in on the 24th of this month. So we'll know in March what these real prices are, but these are just rough numbers. So I'm just, again, no decisions today, but giving you a heads up of the work that's been done and what we're looking at. All the gory details are in these spreadsheets here. So you can see where we're estimating on each street. You can also see in the last column of these graphs, the average PCI, which is the pavement condition index. So in most cases in this program, we're doing chip seal or slurry seal. Um, except for 104th, we'll be doing a hot chip, which has been our standard arterial treatment. Um, so I'll stop there where we'll get into some more detailed conversations. But do you guys have any questions on pavement condition index? Or the program as it's rolled out at a high level at this point?
Thank you, that was a great update and, and education for all of us and, and good reminders on where we've come from. If you want to put the map back up for the discussion, if council members have any questions or comments. And just remember, we don't have to decide anything tonight. The staff's going to get bids on all of these um, streets and the alternates in the dash lines. And then you'll come back at a future date to talk about what program we want to fund. Do council members have any questions to this point in the presentation or comments they'd like to make? Councilmember Fahey.
Yes, thank you. I just want to, one simple question is when you're calculating the qualities of the streets and what needs to be done, are the alleys in downtown included? Or is that something separate?
No, they are separate and I believe um, we've got to double check the budget. I think through the COVID uh, conversations, alleys were pulled out, but I, I need to re-verify that. We've been handling alleys by doing local patching versus just doing a whole alley.
And if you do get Councilmember Fahey and, and everyone watching at home, if you have an alley or a place where you notice a concern, if you put it in the city problem reporter on the website, the staff's been doing a great job about addressing the potholes. And um, we've had some residents with really happy feedback after they put in a concern in their alley and the staff were able to go in and do a really nice job with a patch. So if people have comments, please do let us know through that city problem reporter.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Dickinson?
Sorry, I wasn't quite ready. Um, uh, you know, I just actually want to make a quick comment um, as a um, one year council member. Um, I just really appreciate all the work that has been done over the last 10 years. It's really fun to see these slides and see how much improvement has happened over the last 10 years to get us in a place where we are um, making really good decisions and easier decisions. And I want to compliment um, Director Coward and uh, and all of you for, for really getting us in a much, much, much better place. And uh, I, I appreciate the presentation. Um, it, it's, it's super helpful for me, so that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Lake.
Um, you know, one of the things that we struggle with each year is, you know, what the cost is going to be the next year? If we put things off. Um, how is the price of asphalt uh, changed or not this last year? What do you look, what are you looking at over the course of the next year, do you think?
Um, I'll know on the 24th, that's when our bids come in and then we'll have hard pricing. I haven't really got any chatter on what costs look like right now in the industry. Um, so we'll know more in a month.
We'll stay tuned to that answer. Great question. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Uh, Kurt, thank you for making me part of your presentation. That was, that was humbling. Um, the question I have is if you could bring up the, the sheet that shows the numbers. Um, it, you, you have on there that that is current uh, bid numbers. Is that something you just received?
Uh, which sheet with numbers? There's, every sheet has numbers.
Uh, you had a summary, I think it's the next one.
Yeah?
No, the next one.
It's the, it's the estimates for the prices for this year with the red numbers.
Sorry, the cost estimate numbers.
There you go.
So our cost estimates are based off our.
Go back one slide.
Go back, go back one slide. So that says current base bid, i- is that an actual bid?
No, I'm sorry, that is our current engineer's estimate of the base bid. That is not actually bid. We have no bid numbers yet.
Okay.
That'll happen this month.
All right, that's, thank you.
Um, Councilmember Dickinson, is your hand just?
It's, it's backup. Um, I just forgot, I, I had a note Kurt, on one of your very first slides. Um, you know, you had sort of this decision ma- matrix over time where if you do something early, it costs a dollar. If you do something late, it costs $8. And I, I know intentionally there's no actual um, X axis of time. But if you can just give me kind of a sense with uh, our roads, what is the, are we talking every two years, every three years, every four years for like that $1 spent? Like how often do we need to be going back in to be at the $1 spot?
So for a residential, did you go in and do some maintenance? Um, a decent amount of ma- like a slurry seal or a chip seal? For residential, it's probably every eight to 15 years. For a collector, it's probably every 10 to 20 um, with the hot chip that we're using on collectors. And then on a um, arterial with the hot chip, you're probably at every 10 years. Now, every year we're doing crack seal, which is really minor stuff, but it, it really helps stretch things out.
Thanks, I, I really appreciate that.
All right, um, so we will go on to the next portion of the presentation, which is multimodal.
Yeah, so a few things in here and I'll move fast. Um, I did not include South Border Road in here, but I would like to say that I did get a question on that. And uh, that project right now went through pre-scoping with a consultant that we've selected to do the design that um, is coming actually to the next council meeting for approval of the design. That'll proceed through the remainder of the year and hopefully we'll be starting to see something in the field uh, towards late this year. We are exploring how to, it's the whole corridor, but we are exploring how to possibly do the hawk signal at Eisenhower quicker. So that's the South Border Road uh, surf, pedestrian surface improvement status. Um, most of the, also another question Kim was um, most of the traffic calming we talked about last fall is out there. Um, we have not gotten up to the Heckla area yet. And we have not done front street yet. Front street was going to get some paint and we just need to wait for the weather to warm up to get that part done. So that's kind of what's going on with traffic calming. The rest of this stuff, our specific areas is part of the program. So we want to tell you where the changes would be happening. So Coyote Run, we have bump outs right now, the red bump outs. You know, we have gotten comments from bikers that the bump outs forced them to merge into the middle. And, and that is by design to protect the pedestrians. And um, and it's also just a limitation of bump outs around residential. In this specific, specific spot on Coyote Run, we don't have residential. So what we've done is we're gonna put, we're gonna kind of reverse it. We're gonna put medians in the middle and then we're going to keep the bike lanes coming through. And what we're going to do is we're going to squeeze the lanes down. So the cars have to merge into the bike lane and it's a very narrow area. So the pedestrians will still have their protection in the middle. The bikes will have priority, the cars will be the last priority. There's not a significant amount of traffic on this road, so this should work. And we'll also have some sort of thermo in the road to indicate the bikes have priority. So this is just an FYI in that area. On this overview map, you can see where the crossing is. Um, there's some light blue lines in this map to show where we're going to put sidewalk in on the um, where sidewalk wasn't put in previously. And we've gotten further comments to just take the sidewalk the whole way on both sides. Um, it's just people want to go north, south. There's still not really a good direct route for north, south. And um, it's just feedback we've gotten. So we're just, this is a collector, it's meant to get people north, south. And um, for multimodal, we're going to embrace the people that want to be on the sidewalk. This is, there is right away there that envisioned for the road and the sidewalk. So we don't view this as an infringement on open space, even though there's open space next to the road. Um, the, the area was plotted wide enough for a road and a sidewalk. So any comments on the Coyote Run or any concerns on where we're going with that?
Any questions or comments on these slides? Um, Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you. Uh, yeah Kurt, could you show on the, for the sidewalk? Are you saying that the, the blue is going to be the sidewalk? We'll go all the way from Tamarisk all the way down to Hickory?
Yeah, we're on both sides, we're going to take it from Tamarisk to Hickory, which this slide does not show. It needs updated a little bit. So yes.
So sidewalk on both sides for the whole length of the roads? Okay, that's perfect, thank you.
Correct.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the question I have is right where you have the cursor, at Hickory. Um, it says three-way stop. Are we really talking about putting stop signs on Washington right there?
Yeah, I was going to go there next, I was trying to get over the pause on the sidewalk. Um, three-way stop. Yeah, well, you know, we, the team's gone out, we've looked at this area. It's just, it's on a curve, there's just a lot of things going on. It's hard, it's a tough spot to do a bump out. You could do a median, we could raise the intersection. There's all these things we could do that spend a lot of money. But really the most effective thing here would be a three-way stop. Um, we got feedback from the neighborhood, it's along Hickory Street, that HOA. Uh, that I, the gentleman's name just escaped my mind, but he was on our traffic calming uh, meeting back in the fall. He, he talked to the HOA and, and that group of people per se, and said they're, they're, they've endorsed the idea around a three-way stop. Our team separately, just after banging all the ideas around, feel like that's, it's the cheapest way to go. It's like 300 bucks for some signs, maybe 500. And, and you call it good. Um, and there's nothing wrong with doing it. Now, all that being said, there's homes around that area. When you put in a stop sign, it adds some noise, some startup breaks. And we would like to talk with all the adjacent homeowners and make sure they're truly understanding what we want to do and are on board. And, and get some signatures that they're okay with that. So that's what I would say about the three-way stop. Um, but it's not set in stone if you feel like it's too obtrusive.
So Kurt, let me try to summarize. You said you're going to do some community outreach to all of the homeowners in the adjacent area and the HOA. And including the homeowners that are across the street from Hickory. Um, and then you'll make a decision based on that outreach around whether or not the new. the new because we did just do the change where we put the sign in the middle of the street. So we'll find out if that is solving the problem or if we need to take additional action.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you. You know, I I had the opportunity to talk to Kurt earlier this week about number of these and he's particularly the sidewalks and the three-way stops. And I think I feel comfortable with the proposal on the sidewalks. The three-way stop, yeah, I I guess it's very important to talk to the people whose homes back up to Washington. And as well as the property owner across the street on Hickory. I mean, it's like getting feedback from an HOA is important, but the HOA is largely people really to the east of this and, you know, people that have a stop sign put in there right next to their backyard or across their street, they do get impacted by the noise stopping and going and as well as their quality. And I think it's important to hear from them and and, you know, balance their views with the needs of the entire neighborhood and the community. But you know, perhaps, you know, relabeling that as a potential three-way stop instead of, you know, presenting it as something that's already been decided. I think that might be a good thing at this point in the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I would just echo that. I think all this is great. I think the sidewalks are great. The crosswalk was installed last year is great. I do think that this intersection is prime for a three-way stop just because of the curve on both sides. So if you're pulling out of Hickory, there's a negative curve on your right and a negative curve on your left, so it's difficult to see in both directions. So it's it seems like a spot that for safety reasons is is a really good location for a three-way stop. So I would support that direction, but of course, happy to hear about reaching out to the community and and what what, you know, noise issues that might have for it sounds like three or four of those of those houses along that that area.
Thank you. All right, Kurt, next slide.
So Empire Road, you know, it's a back door to the city. Most of the traffic is coming from city services. It's it's in CTC. But there's a lot of bike use there. There's a lot of people walking on the street. There's not a great trail. There's no trail system really to get from Coal Creek Trail to to Pine Street. Obviously Coal Creek Trail, if you were to take Front Street from Pine Street down, there's great access, but people want to come out on Pine Tree and they want to walk along Empire. So we just said, you know, what could this look like if we really thought about it differently? There's a technology or a striping called advisory bike lanes. And essentially, you get rid of the double yellow, you paint dash lines that represent your bike lanes and it it is kind of like a large shared space, but it really delineates where the bikes and people can be. The picture we're looking at, you know, we wouldn't add the red likely. We just have the dash lines. And maybe some markings within that area to delineate some things. And so we were, we wanted to talk with the council if this was an idea that they'd like to try on Empire Road, given the the huge recreational usage out there. Also knowing that if we tried this and it just was a complete disaster, we've just got these white dash lines, we could always black them out and then paint a double yellow center line, but this really is a cutting-edge idea. I'm not making it up. It it exists out there. It's just not widely used. So I just want to get your thoughts on this idea.
Councilmember Feedback. Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you. So Kurt, please step me through this again. Is this like this is still a two-way street?
Yes.
So it's one, it's basically one lane on a two-way street?
Yes, it it's kind of like cars are driving on either side. They're either side of the street and they're getting out of each other's way as two cars are oncoming.
Gosh, so as a cyclist, I'm not sure this makes me feel any safer.
Councilmember Lipton, can I add something? My understanding of how it works is so you drive in the middle because there's so low volume of traffic. There's not often like two cars passing. So the car just drives down the middle of the lane. But if another car comes, then you go over the dotted white line into the bike lane. But you're not allowed to cross into the bike lane. If there's a bike there, then you have to stop or get behind the bike. So that's my understanding of how it works. So if we did this, we'd have to obviously do a huge communication and outreach effort to explain to people how to use this type of a road because there's education around it.
Well, as a cyclist, I'm not sure this would make me feel safer. I think I would feel unsafe. Because I know the car will protect itself first and you know, there's only so much space to go. So I I don't know. I'm I guess I'm feeling a little skeptical at this point. And I realize there isn't a lot of traffic, but there is some traffic. And doesn't take a lot of traffic to cause a cause an issue for cyclists. Thank you.
Other councilmembers? Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Carr, can you explain? So is it that there isn't enough? Maybe I missed this. Maybe you said it. I'm sorry. Is it that there's not enough space to do a full sort of protected bike lane or a bike lane of any sort? And so you have to have this sort of shared space concept on that road?
That is correct. It's narrow asphalt. It doesn't have shoulders. And so essentially you can just get two car lanes in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
I liked the picture. I mean, this is out in, you know, the farmland somewhere where there's not a lot of traffic. You know, I I actually ride my road bike on on Empire quite a bit. And like Counselor Lipton, I would be concerned as well. Because quite honestly, even with two lanes, you know, you're always, you know, concerned about the traffic, but this would squeeze it even more. So I I think this is an interesting idea. I'm not sure this is the right location. Thank you.
Councilmember Dickinson?
I love it. I think it's amazing. I I also ride my bike on Empire all the time. We tend to ride basically in the middle of the road because there isn't a shoulder. And so unlike most roads, it actually reminds me a lot of I spent a lot of time in North Carolina where there just are no bike paths. So I see Empire as one of the most dangerous roads to bike on, except that there's very little traffic. And so the only reason I feel safe on Empire is because there's so little traffic. So having something like this where there is a bike lane. But certainly, it's weird, right? It's kind of like the 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 di- the diamond, the diverging diamond on McCaslin, I think this would take a lot of sort of people would have a major reaction to this. And I don't know that it's necessary to create a major reaction to concept, but I think sort of like the diverging diamond is a great way to get over a highway and emerge into highway traffic and out of highway traffic. This seems like a very really interesting, cool way to deal with lots of bikes, little car traffic and a small road. So I I think it's brilliant, but I totally understand the the fear and the worry and but I I think it's something we should look into. I think it's I think it's really cool.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney, is your hand up again or? Okay, so I'll just add in. So I I think if we do this, we, like I said before, need to do a tremendous amount of education and outreach around it. Just to explain to people how to use this. And the way I I look at this is it's sort of how I see people actually using that road. It would just be marking it that way. So, you know, if you come across a bike and you're on that road right now, you just illegally cross over the double yellow into the other lane to give the bike as much space as you can. And so this would make it marked the way that people are actually utilizing the street and and showing that the bikes have that space and that you're supposed to drive down the middle. So perhaps this is something we do some engagement around ahead of doing it and then, you know, get the community talking about it and understanding it. And then maybe we find out where people are, do some surveying informally and discussion around this. If you were to do this, I would be strongly in favor of coloring the at the edges of the road a different color like they're shown in this picture. I think it loses the effectiveness if you just do a dotted white line. Other comments from members? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I I just I guess, Kurt, if if there's the only confusion I have is what's the, I mean, other than cross bike traffic, what's the benefit of having two bike lanes? Wouldn't wouldn't we benefit from sort of a wider single lane? And just one bike lane on one side? And I just don't know if there's any, yeah, any other any other options. But really, the thing that's just incredibly, you know, messing with my brain is an idea of a two-way road with only one road or only one lane. So that doesn't change either way. But what about making a wider road with with only one bike lane?
I think, you know, we've talked about this in several areas about having the bike lane on just one side of the road. Not with council, but with staff internally. And I think there's just a more, it feels more natural and intuitive if everyone's going in a similar direction. Especially if it's not going to be buffered. I would and I don't think it's a good idea to have bikes going against traffic in a multi-use both-way bike lane without buffering. And I don't think we do buffering here, so I wouldn't recommend that.
Councilmember Faky?
Yeah, thank you. My only question is, is there a point where Lewis Phil's Empire Road meets Lafayette's Empire Road? And how would that transition happen?
It's all ours, except for a chunk in the middle that's the counties, essentially kind of over the creek is the county. It's kind of some middle ground.
And they're willing to go with this plan?
We don't know yet. I really didn't want to get too far ahead of you guys. You guys are the first like eye test first discussion. So if if you all felt like this was worth the experiment, then we would talk to the county about it.
So from the discussion, it's not overly clear to me what direction we've given. So could we have a little more discussion or could someone throw out a suggestion for how we move forward or how we give staff direction as a body? Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, I think you heard me voice my opinion. I I think it's an interesting idea and I I I just don't think it's the right place for it. So I I would pass on this idea. I would, that's what I would suggest. But you know, it's if it was more of a country road, I I think a lot of people use this to get around going down Empire, the the other Empire. And connecting, so they use it as a bypass. And so I see cars going very quickly. So having one lane that they share, I believe, puts the cyclists at more risk. So I'm not in favor. So I would pass.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I I share Proton Maloney's concerns with this. I have never seen this before anywhere. And it just intuitively looks to me as a cyclist really it's not dangerous, uncomfortable. So, you know, if we got a problem to solve on Empire, and I'm not sure we do, if we'd have a problem on Empire, then I think we ought to look at some alternative design or some design alternatives that might include this, but there may be other ways to solve those problems that are more, you know, conventional. So I I don't want to just rush into one solution without understanding better what the problem is and what the options are. And to be honest, I I ride this almost, you know, every couple of weeks during riding season. And I I feel pretty comfortable on Empire Road. And so I I'm not sure what the problem that we're trying to solve is. So I I'm not enthusiastic about it, I guess.
All right. So I think it sounds like a potential path forward is to continue. We can each talk to our community groups and our, you know, various contacts around finding out if there are problems on Empire Road. And then at a future time, when we talk about transportation again, maybe understanding what options we might have to address the concerns that exist on Empire. Does that summarize our next steps adequately to the group? Director Cowan, is that clear?
Yeah, that's fine. I I just want to be clear. I didn't, there wasn't a resounding people telling us there was a problem. We just were repaving. We tried to brainstorm what you could do to embrace what's happening there. This is what popped out of that. So there is no, there really is no problem to solve. I don't want to lead anyone down that road like we're putting it back the way it is 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 not a bad alternative. It's a good alternative. It works fine, too.
All right. So when you bring it back, so this won't come back to council, then you'll just repaint it and stripe it with Sherons?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to everybody? Good? All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I can't see you because I can only see what I'm sharing. So I assume everyone was nodding yes to the.
It was mostly that with a few other faces, but the.
Yeah, I'm I'm making crappy faces.
Okay, all right.
But but generally, everyone was thumbs up and nodding. That's what the long pause was. I was waiting for Caleb to give a thumbs up, which never came.
Sounds good. Well, if you guys change your minds, we've got several months before we do it. So let me know, but we'll do traditional. Just talking about the Century, so behind Lowe's and up by the apartments along the daycare, Century Place, Century Circle. So we're just looking at, right now, it's just one wide road. So on those streets, we're going to be adding a bike lane on both sides and there'll only be parking available on one side. And I think as far as the north-south Century Circle, the parking will be on the west side. The food truck side per se. And for Century Place, I think we had the parking on the south side. So again, continuing adding bike lanes and multimodal abilities. This side here kind of highlights where those will be. The on Centennial Parkway and Cherry, we'll look to see if we can squeeze bike lanes in there. Now that we've reconfigured Cherry a little more. There's some constraints and it puts cyclists into little bit of a conflict zone as you're heading either direction with the continuous rights coming in and all this through traffic. But we'll we'll look and see what we can do on Centennial from McCaslin to Century Circle. And then if you're trying to make a connection to the BRT, there's not really a great connection in there. So we'll talk with planning to see if there's there's something we can work with the the property owners in that area to to do something rather than nothing. But but that's not necessarily the true focus of the paving. I just want to show you where we're adding bike lanes in the area. And then where there could be a follow-up conversation. So any questions on that?
I just have a comment. Lowe's has a bike rack. And so whenever I bike to Home Improvement Store, I always shop at Lowe's, but Home Depot doesn't have a bike rack. So if you are approaching them for bike-related infrastructure, you might let them know their like Community Solutions and other groups do grants for bike racks, but we could help hook them up with a bike rack as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm making a note. So just some housekeeping from last year. I I took on this project to try to do something different. I thought we had heard from the community before we tried this, that the community want to see more art and about out and about. And so we met with LRC a few times. We did the public outreach at the crosswalks with the QR code signs and the website. We got a little bit of feedback, nothing tangible. We held a public meeting where we invited all the artists to come to the meeting and just brainstorm with us on what they might want to do. No one came to that. So we kind of got, then winter hit and we had to pause and just where are we at? We didn't get what we needed. So we filled it in with the tan crusher fines just to kind of winterize it so it wouldn't collect water if we had a snowy year. And that's what we've got out there now. So I I need I need to get past this idea. It was 10,000 bucks to get the crusher fines in. There's some areas around Denver where people have done crusher fines and different sizes and textures of rock, desire escape. And you keep that soft look. So with the crusher fines we have in there, we could add to that with some texture and keep it a soft look, or we can just rebid for the concrete brick pattern. I just want to get your feedback on this. I know we got to get past this. What we're doing with these medians is we got to close this conversation out and move on. So I really just want to see what you guys are thinking based off what you've observed and which way you want us to go. based off what you've observed and which way you want us to go.
Any council member feedback on this one? Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um, thank you, Kurt. You know, you know, I really liked this idea that, um, you and your staff came up with in 2020 and trying to get feedback, but, um, given there wasn't a flood of interest from the city, I think it's important that we invest in a hardscape that has a long-term, um, as a long-term investment and move on.
So go ahead and fill them with aggregate concrete. Any other feedback?
I don't disagree with that, Mayor.
Okay. So that is our feedback. Director Corr?
Perfect. Thank you. We will work, we will get that done. Um, yeah, I touched on the traffic calming stuff. Any questions on that?
Any questions from council members? So we'll pause at this point and take public comment on any, uh, this whole topic is around pavement management, pedestrian improvements. Um, you can see where we're going in the discussion. So if any members of the public have comments on any part of this agenda item, this is your opportunity to comment. All right, seeing that, that takes us back over to council discussion. Councilmember Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I was, uh, very excited to see this, many of these traffic calming initiatives come in. Um, and that, uh, residents have have written, uh, written in, uh, in very appreciative of the the new crosswalks on Polk as well as, um, the the one on County Road. Um, and I also want to say that the the improvements on Cherry and the way that it, uh, now goes down to one lane and the protected bike lanes, um, have been really positive improvements and and, uh, we've we've heard from a number of residents that are very pleased about it. Um, so I just want to, I just want to give, um, Director Corr, you and your staff uh, kudos for that work and and really, uh, you know, taking our feedback and 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 people's feedback from from the community, uh, and really putting that into action. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any others? I lost my participant panel. I'll try to get it back. Councilmember Fagin?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to also say that I just drove down Washington and went through that intersection at, uh, Hickory on Sunday. And there, when I went through the intersection at Hickory and the intersection of the the path crossing over Coyote Run, those yellow signs that you see in Kurt's photo here, um, that are in the middle of the road were perfect for slowing us down and making sure that we were very cautious going through those two intersections where there were pedestrians present in both intersections. Just blew my mind. So anyway, they they work.
Thank you. All right, Kurt, you can move to the next slide there.
Okay, just before I leave this slide, I want you all dreaming about Via Appia, because probably mid to late in the year, we'll start thinking about what we'll do with Via Appia. It could be nothing, it could be something, but it is in the TMP scheduled CIP, so, uh, just know that's coming. Uh, and we did install a new beacon flashing crossing at Safe Brush for the existing crosswalk that I didn't mention. Um, so man, just as we had got everything done, it was looking good, and we got our first freeze. We had some of the new green thermos start craft cracking off. And, um, it turns out that the way the contractor applied it wasn't the way the vendor instructions were, so it is a warranty item. We just want to give you guys a heads up. That stuff's pretty expensive, so we didn't want you worrying that that was on the city's dime. And then, yeah, everything else in this packet, I'm not going to go into, but if seeing is believing, each of the maps that continue in the presentation here show what streets are under thirty-five in the model each year. And as you can see, some streets stay because they were in the hold mode, like maybe Campus Drive where there's development. Other streets, we kind of collect them in an area and then we knock them off with a with a program in that neighborhood. So your maps are there. I also threw in just, um, you know, if you ever want to be your own pavement scoring expert, roughly the types of things on the road you can look for and how they might be scored. I'm happy to talk with you one-on-one if you found that entertaining to read. If not, then you can throw it in the circle filing cabinet, but it's there for your reading. Um, so I think that's everything for tonight, unless there's anything else you all wanted to talk about on this subject.
Thank you so much for taking us through all of that really great information. And I know everybody had a chance to look through it ahead of time and study all your graphics in detail. So thank you. And this is, you know, one of our, um, biggest responsibilities as a local government is transportation and maintenance of our infrastructure. And, um, it can be easy to try to rob this area, to make investments in other sort of more fun areas, but it's it's really, um, you know, our responsibility to take care of the community's assets in the way that they expect. And I think you've just done a really great job outlining it and trying to make sure that everyone, pedestrians, bicyclists, people getting around by car are able to u- utilize our streets and get to where they're going, get to see their family or their doctor or grocery store. So thank you for everything you're doing. Other comments in general or follow-up questions? Councilmember Lay?
Yes, I'd look forward to the day when we get to do another, uh, field trip. Enjoyed those. And you always do a nice, uh, job with those. So when the appropriate time comes up, I don't know that there's, it's not really, we're not really at the right time in the pandemic to do something like that, but eventually that could be, and it's, it's useful to have, have that opportunity to to actually see the whole thing in action. So I I really appreciate the work that you do. It wouldn't be a meeting on this if I didn't say that I hope and trust that you were doing as much value engineering on uh, streets as you possibly can do, consistent with the concerns that this council member Lipton, uh, typically raises and that we're getting the best bang for a buck.
Absolutely. And we'll try to send you guys more pictures in lieu of the field trip, so you can at least, um, see something.
I would just encourage everybody to go out and look around. You don't need to send us pictures. Any other comments or questions, feedback? Thank you very much, Director Corr. So that takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is discussion direction of utility line undergrounding priorities and use of Excel one percent fund. We'll have a presentation this evening, I believe, from Emily Hoken.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, tonight, staff is providing an update on utility line undergrounding. Um, as part of the 2019 budget, funding was approved to bury utility lines at State Highway Forty-two in Griffith. In 2017, staff developed a map of overhead utility lines in the rideaway throughout the city and worked with the utility committee to identify top priorities in which to use the Excel one percent fund, which is ultimately how we got to the project selected, um, for the 2019 budget. And the city's franchise agreement with Excel requires that the company allocate one percent of the preceding year's electric gross revenue to bury existing overhead facilities at the city's direction. Uh, the utility committee identified service reliability as a top priority in which to use this funding. And Excel identified the project at Forty-two in Griffith as one of three projects that would improve service reliability in the city. And following coordination with Excel, Century Link, and Comcast, the city requested a formal construction bid from Excel, which we received last fall. The final cost estimate came back close to $1 million, almost double the initial estimate provided by Excel. Uh, before moving forward with construction, the city asked Excel to reevaluate the top priorities for service reliability that it had previously identified to confirm that these had not changed over the past few years. Excel identified three different projects based on the number of customers served, age of the lines, and recent outage data. Uh, when staff asked why the Forty-two in Griffith project was no longer a top priority, Excel stated that upgrades had been completed in the area since 2017. Additionally, Excel reviews its service map and outage data annually to develop an upgrade plan to address service reliability issues. Um, Excel reported that most communities use the one percent fund to address aesthetics instead. As the project at Forty-two in Griffith is no longer a top priority for service reliability per Excel, and these priorities seem to change often, staff does not recommend moving forward with this project. Um, additionally, future improvement to the Forty-two corridor could result in facilities being relocated at Excel's expense. Uh, a new project was introduced in 2020 as a potential priority. The alley between Main and Lafarge and Walnut and Pine is one of the only locations downtown with a significant amount of commercial properties being serviced by overhead lines. There has been discussion of a proposed redevelopment at Eight-O-Nine Main. The utility poles and overhead lines create challenges to the operation of the commercial businesses along Main Street, however. With the removal of the poles and overhead lines, support traffic for businesses could be accommodated more easily. Uh, burying these facilities could also bring the area into further compliance with the current downtown design guidelines. An initial cost estimate for this work provided by Excel was between five hundred and close to eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, staff suggests including a substantial contingency, however, based on past issues with Excel estimates like what we experienced at Forty-two in Griffith. Uh, staff recommends continuing to look into the project at Eight-O-Nine Main, as there are potential benefits related to economic development, service reliability, and aesthetics. There may also be an opportunity for cost sharing with the, um, revitalization commission. Um, Economic Vitality Director Megan Pierce is here tonight, as well as the architect for the redevelopment project and can provide additional details. Lastly, staff has included, uh, draft criteria for an undergrounding policy which could help determine the use of the one percent fund for future projects. If a policy was adopted, staff could prioritize projects as they are identified and bring forward construction contracts to council for approval. Uh, staff is seeking feedback on the following. Um, first, should the city cancel the project at Forty-two in Griffith as it is no longer top priority for service reliability? Second, should the city continue to explore the project at Eight-O-Nine Main? Next steps include following up with the owner to confirm interest and timing of the redevelopment project and requesting a construction bid from Excel, which we know takes some time, um, based on our previous experience. Um, also, does council agree with the draft criteria for an undergrounding policy as included in staff's memo? If so, staff can bring back a resolution to formally adopt such a policy. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, so we'll take public comment on this agenda item at this time. If any members of the public care to comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Right, seeing none, we'll come back to council member comments, questions, and directions. So, um, I appreciate you refreshing this and bringing back the, um, criteria that the utility committee had previously suggested. Uh, I am supportive of moving forward with the project at Eight-O-Nine Main. I think that this is a really, um, I always think we should try to be proactive about the undergrounding, where if we all remember the citizens pay into this through their electric bill. And so we're building up these funds to be able to do projects to ultimately underground all the lines in town. Uh, and given, you know, the economic, uh, position we're in with COVID and everything, I think we should try to spend the undergrounding fund and not, you know, save up too much at at this point in time. So there's several million dollars in there. So I do think we should move forward with projects as quickly as we can um, for the economic benefit that that'll have. The Eight-O-Nine project makes a lot of sense. I think in addition to that, I'm supportive of continuing on with Forty-two in Griffith, because we've learned so much about it, we've found so much out, like just, I think we should complete the project just because of the investment of work and effort we've already put into it. Um, and then I would like to add to the undergrounding policy that, um, utility lines that are on city open space be prioritized and, um, that utility lines that interfere with sidewalks. Um, so for, in Old Town, for example, there are several utility poles at the ends of alleys that interfere with the ability for a wheelchair or a stroller to just easily cross the sidewalk. So any places where we have poles that are interfering with pedestrian, um, mobility, we should address those. And those are my comments. Any other comments, questions on this agenda item? Councilmember Mola, Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And thank you, Mayor, for leading with your comments. I really much appreciate that. And we rarely give you that opportunity, but, um, so Emily, thank you very much for for your presentation. I'm going to go in reverse order of your discussion direction items. So for me, an undergrounding policy is a really good idea. You know, this is the kind of thing that we make make decisions on many years apart of how we invest that money. As the mayor said, there's several million dollars there. Um, and we didn't accumulate that over the last year. That was accumulated over several years. Um, which for many of the people who are currently on council, including myself, um, it was accumulated before even I started accumulating, even before I got on council. So having a policy that sets some, at least some direction that can be changed over time, but at least set some direction for council, I think is really a positive step. And so that's something I agree with. I absolutely believe that it it should include anything that interferes with mobility, uh, sidewalks, um, bike paths, whatever might be. The one on open space, I I I understand where the mayor's coming from. I would certainly entertain that being part of it. Um, regarding the two projects, Eight-O-Nine Main, I very much agree with that one. Um, Forty-two and Griffith, I'm a little softer on that one, but I think we've already started moving down that path. So I could support that one as well. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the two projects that were identified and discussed. I'm under the the, uh, criteria, though, I'm wondering why system reliability was not included. Since that's always been our primary concern, and now it doesn't even mention it.
Director Hogan?
Yeah, we, you know, we didn't include service reliability since it, it just seems like a constantly moving target based on what we're hearing from Excel, that these priorities are changing year to year. But we could certainly add a a point in there that, you know, that any projects that could improve service reliability, and maybe there's even cost sharing opportunities with Excel. Like if Excel is going to bury, you know, is going to maybe relocate some lines or replace infrastructure, maybe the city could cost share to underground at the same location, especially if there's a service reliability component.
Well, I, you know, I I would like to emphasize the system reliability aspect of all this because um, that in part provides a lot of public benefit. As we become more dependent on Wi-Fi and, you know, other things, you know, in our homes and residences and businesses, reliability is extremely important. So if you can bury service lines and improve reliability where reliability today may be, or in the future might be sketchy. I mean, I would certainly like to see that emphasized. I also know that reliability is something that Excel has a responsibility for. And you could always go to the PUC if they're not living up to their responsibilities, but, you know, as part of a prioritization scheme, I think it needs to at least be there. You know, I'll also say, you know, I'll just, you know, it's, it's a throwaway comment that the prioritization scheme never came to utility committee. And I, I'm I'm wondering why utility committee didn't at least get a chance to take a look at it and provide some recommendations to council, you know, working with staff. It just seems to, you know, kind of avoided that loop when utility committee was involved with actually identifying projects and and trying to make recommendations on that.
Several years ago, um, it went to utility committee as a good point that this new one could have circled back through utility committee. Um, so when the draft, uh, staff will have to take this feedback we provide today and write up a draft policy. So we can get that direction that we think the draft policy should go to utility committee for vetting. Does that address that concern? Councilmember Lipton?
Sure, that's fine. Yeah.
All right. Other people have feedback or additions they would like to add? It's so far, the comments have been that the two projects that have been identified should move forward. And that, starting with the criteria listed here and the few other criteria that we've um, added through the discussion today would go to utility committee once there's a policy outlined. Other comments? Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you. Yes, my only other comment is that we're, we're not considering the possibility of the municipalization of all of our streetlights. And the timing of that would impact whether or not we would want Excel to do anything right now. Because if they improve it now, the, the purchase price to us would be at full price. If we, if we do the municipalization first, then we get it at there pretty much almost free because it's at its, the end of its lifespan. And according to the, the Zoom call that I was on this, earlier this week or last week, the annual cost for streetlights, for example, is $100,000 for 1,000 lights. And the maintenance on that can still be done by the same company that does the contracting for Excel. So we would be paying the subcontractor instead of paying Excel and the subcontractor. So I'm, I'm just saying that I, I think the, the concept of going to municipalization on our streetlights and, and power would be something that we'd want to talk about before we talk about upgrading things.
So Councilmember Fahey, I just need some clarification from you or, or maybe from Emily Hogan. Just if they, if we do the undergrounding of the power line, does Excel necessarily replace the light at that time? Or is that a separate project that you'll bring forward to us at a separate time to talk about the light upgrades? I guess Emily.
Yes, I, I believe it's separate. I think, you know, the electric, you kind of have like two different municipalization efforts. One is for the city to purchase all, you know, distribution and electric lines and operate an electric utility. And the other is to purchase the streetlights and, you know, potentially operate that system and do maintenance outside of Excel. I don't, I haven't heard, you know, of any interest in exploring the full municipalization of all electric lines. So if we, you know, continue down the path of having Excel provide electricity in the city, then I think you wouldn't run into any issues with, you know, burying lines and then paying for that again just because of streetlights. It's a, it's a separate upgrade. The undergrounding doesn't really affect the, the streetlights necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So when we do talk about, so Director Hogan, when we talk about the streetlights, can we have some information around Councilmember Fahey's points?
Sure, yeah, we can, we can talk about that. So in terms of the streetlights.
Sorry, I, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot today. I just meant at a, at the future date, when we talk about the streetlights, can we have some information around Councilmember Fahey's points? Sorry?
Yes, yes, definitely. I mean, in terms of the streetlights, we've, we've moved forward based on council's direction and what's included in the budget for 2021. We're moving forward with the conversion of the decorative streetlights throughout all the neighborhoods, the non-Cobrahead. With Excel, the only portion we're looking at in terms of acquisition are the downtown lights, which we can, will, you know, definitely bring forward at a future date for discussion with council and direction. But I can include that point in that discussion.
Thank you so much. That would be fantastic. Other council comments and questions? All right, so Emily, do you feel like we have given you enough direction on this agenda item?
I do. I just want to clarify one point. And it's that, that you'd like the policy to actually include, you know, guidance around bringing projects to the utility committee before council? Or is that just general direction in relation to just future projects?
Sorry. So what I was proposing was just that you would write up the policy, given the criteria you laid out in the packet and the additional criteria we talked about this evening, and that draft policy would go to the utility committee for vetting. Before it was formally.
Thank you. That, that, that answers my, all my questions.
All right. So that concludes this agenda item. Not seeing any other comments. And that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening. Just a little trouble finding the unmute button.
Thank you. That takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. I'll just start out with a couple of my committee reports, the, and, and council comments. The city attorney's office has been working hard on the Burlington-Northern Santa Fe Agreement to ensure the quiet zones stay on schedule. It has been a tremendous feat, and they've been doing a ton of work on our behalf. But I did get sent the docu-sign for the South Boulder Road construction agreement. So we're one step closer. So we have Dylan and South Boulder Road docu-sign. We are hopeful that the rest of the streets will come to us so that we can get the construction and maintenance agreement. And you'll remember that there was a hard deadline from the ALJ for a March date for construction start. So I, I really hope we meet that date. It's, it's getting a slimmer and slimmer margin every day that I don't get another docu-sign. But we're getting, it's close, so I'm hopeful. And on that same rail kind of theme, at Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition, we've met with RTD, the new RTD director, and talked about our interest in the Northwest Rail through the Fast Trax completion. And the governor, of course, sent a letter concerned about some of the public comments that RTD had been making around not completing the line. And so there's going to be a study session at RTD next Tuesday. If folks want to attend, our study session is canceled. So we can all attend and participate in that discussion. And I just had the, the notes here from the city manager on when that was. Here it is. So it is scheduled at 5:30 on the ninth. And staff will send out more information to us once the materials become available from RTD. And so it's open to the public and all of you. And so you can let your folks know who'd be interested in an update there and attending. And similarly, on that same note, there was a Congressman DeGuss call, and we were talking about the infrastructure bill that will likely come this year. So the federal government may actually do an infrastructure bill. So this is kind of like the most exciting time of my entire life. So there are a lot of different things they're talking about in there, including multimodal transit, including infrastructure for internet, public works, water upgrades, just long overdue infrastructure to bring the United States up to modern standards of infrastructure. And one of the things people are talking about in there is some additional funding for Amtrak to expand facilities. I've kind of talked a little bit about that here, but I just want to reiterate it to all of you. So Amtrak has identified our region as one of the areas they see potential for growth. And so I'm working with the different coalitions that we're part of to try to get the groups to agree that we should try to get the federal government to earmark that, that, that Amtrak expansion funding for our region for the Front Range Passenger Rail from Pablo to Fort Collins, of course, using the Northwest Rail alignment. So stay tuned, and I'll let you know if anything comes of that. But there's a lot of work going on around that infrastructure bill. And there's a lot of hope that it will bring, you know, like the Flint, Michigans, and other places that you've seen in the news up to modern day standards and really make it a better quality of life for all the Americans. So that's fantastic. At Metro Mayor's Caucus, we're also talking about transportation funding. So the state has been talking about modernizing the way we pay for transportation because, of course, the gas tax has lagged and it doesn't generate the type of revenue that it did when it was last increased, I believe, in 1991 or 1992. So all of the talks are around additional fees for transportation that would go into the HUTF. But there's big concern about using the HUTF Highway User Trust Fund. But there's a big concern around using the typical allocation that we've used historically from the Highway User Trust Fund because it doesn't adequately serve the urban areas. So we get less than 30, we get less than 40% of the share from that allocation, even though 60% of the funding comes from that area. So it, it's because there are so many lane miles outside of the urban area, and it heavily weights lane miles, and it doesn't weight population and vehicle miles traveled. So we're talking about making a more equitable formula, and we're talking about different mechanisms to fund transportation into the future because, of course, with electric vehicles coming on, it gets even more revenue away from the gas tax, and we have even further declines in the way we fund transportation. So stay tuned. If anything tangible comes forward, all four D emails around that. But right now, sort of, everything's on the table. And a lot of the discussions are around ensuring that whatever the fee is can be directly aligned with the service that's being provided because, of course, fees have to match up to what services you're providing fees for. So stay tuned on that. So that takes us to Economic Vitality Committee.
Mayor, I have another comment. Would you like it at the end or the beginning?
Please, you can give all your committees and any comments you have.
Okay. Well, so I'll start with the comment. I just, I, I saw my first article that had some data on vaccination by race. And I think that, you know, as, as a community, both the city of Louisville and the county of Boulder, that we need to be really prepared for the reality that as this data comes out, I think, you know, I've, I've been guessing for a long time, and I've gotten my first confirmation, and I will admit that I'm biased or I'm looking for confirmation bias on my, on my assumption, but that we're gonna see an incredible disproportionate vaccine distribution. And without anti-racist policies that explicitly correct that, that is going to be a defining piece of this vaccine rollout. And, you know, if you go to Boulder County website right now, you'll see vaccines, one dose, two dose over time, but there's no race information, and they've done a wonderful job of having race information about, you know, COVID disease. And they will eventually have good racial information on, on vaccines. And I'm, want to make sure we all understand right now, it's going to be a major issue. And I think that it's something that we need to address as a community as quickly as possible, that we are trying to even that playing field and, and make sure that the city of Louisville as a very affluent and very white community is not the worst when it comes to that differential, that we're actually the best. So I don't know how to do that, and there are a lot of really brilliant people that are working on it. I in no way have any sort of monopoly on that concept. But I just really hope that in the meetings to come and in the months to come that everyone in this council is open to thinking about how we fix a problem that doesn't exist yet officially, but is, I believe, gonna exist very soon. And, and so I just want that on everybody's mind as we move forward. So I appreciate you guys thinking about that. Economic Vitality Committee, we have a big meeting coming up in a couple of weeks after our next council meeting in which we're discussing the future of Brad and the future of the structure of EVC. So I, I hope you guys will really take a deep look at that packet when it comes out and certainly, you know, ask any questions about, you know, how we arrived at, at the, the recommendations to council. And I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see the hands, but I'm gonna go through the committees. And then when you get to your committee, if you can make any comments that you want. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a finance committee meeting last Monday, the 25th. We talked about a number of things. We talked about the Wendy Gap firming project financing, just to get everybody up to speed with the, that, that whole thing. We did review the 2021 bids for insurance. I shouldn't say bids. There was a bid. Our current provider provided a increase, substantial increase, and, and it's because we're, I guess, a risky city. We got to the enterprise dashboards, the, the rec center dashboard basically was following the trends that we saw, the worst case scenario of the, the numbers for, for attendance. And that was based upon, you know, being in red and orange and so forth. Golf course was the best case scenario, probably the, the most rounds ever, probably at the golf course. I don't know what they were in the early 90s, but certainly in, in recent history. We reviewed the November sales and use tax information. That is trending at about down by 10%, which is actually good news because we were, you know, thinking it could be much higher earlier in the year. And the, for the year of 2020, we're suspecting it'll be somewhere in the 15% range. So that's, that's pretty good news. And that was, that was primarily what we talked about at that meeting.
Thank you. Utility Committee?
Utility Committee meeting next week.
Thank you. Colorado Communities for Climate Action?
We have met quite a bit, actually, and there's a lot going on at Capitol. So we do have our next meeting on Friday morning. But there are several bills that have been introduced at the state level that have to do with climate issues. And CC4CA will be very vocal in supporting them, writing letters and showing up whenever possible. My question to council is, how vocal do you want to be? Or do you want me to be in supporting various bills that come up that CC4CA is supporting? Should we maybe have that as a, an agenda item to discuss the bills? And then potential support, and what kind of support we'll give?
So what we've done as a council typically is we have our legislative agenda. And if there's a bill that is consistent with our legislative agenda, staff and you can support it on our behalf, like if it's clearly explicitly in our legislative agenda, then you'll just do that for us, and it'll be awesome. If there is something that you think is really important for us to take specific action, and it's not clear that it's in our legislative policy, then you can put that topic on a future agenda. So if there are future agenda items you need to add, council members have put those on in the past. And then also council members in the past have supported topics on their own as an individual council member when there hasn't been time to have a council meeting around it. We can, of course, revisit how we've done that in the past if council members would like to approach it differently than that. But that is how we have, have done things.
So should I let everybody know at, at this update time what bills are being supported? And, and just let everybody know if you would like to support them, this is a good one to go for?
And, and if you, any updates you want to give are great. And if there are ones that you think are consistent with our legislative agenda that you would like to tell us that you're supporting on our behalf, you can let us know about that. That would be great. And any council members have a desire to add to a future agenda and expansion or expansive discussion around this topic?
Mayor, this is, this is City Manager Bolster, too. Councilmember Fahey, we can also, if, if it's helpful, just review the legislative agenda with you, too, and staff. And if we think there's something that's, you know, in conversation, if, that needs direction, we can, we can talk about that. But my, my guess is most of it should be addressed through the legislative agenda. So I think there's good direction there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And then you had your hand up. Did you have another comment you wanted to make, Councilmember Fahey, before I move to the next one?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Community Solutions? No report? Consortium of Cities?
No report. That's, that's me. I can give my updates. So Consortium of Cities will meet later this week, tomorrow, I believe. We also had a joint issues committee meeting with Superior. We did that last week, and we talked about the library services agreement that we have between the two cities. I think we came to a good agreement, and principal and staff are working on an agreement, on drafting agreement that will come before council here shortly. We did agree to review the agreement or the use because we've, we, we will be expanding some of the services into Superior and their new community center. And so we will be monitoring the use to make sure that the funding that Superior is providing is adequate. Um, and so we will be monitoring the use to make sure that the funding that Superior is providing is adequate. And we also discussed affordable housing and some of the affordable housing projects that we have done in partnership with the county here in Louisville. Some of their newer council members, uh, are interested in affordable housing in Superior. Because, um, as according to their trustees or the board member, they, they don't have any housing, affordable housing projects in Superior currently. So they're very interested to learn about our experience and working with them. And the sort of counties track record managing things. So, um, our staff provided some good information there. I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Um, Downtown Business Association Street Fair?
Street Fair Committee actually met today for a couple hours. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's very difficult for the street fair right now to do any firm planning about, you know, what might happen this summer for obvious reasons. So, but we've been discussing various scenarios. One, which I think we're fairly certain of is if there is a street fair, we're gonna probably delay it into later in the summer, perhaps into September. Because we think that would probably be safest and have the more, most flexibility in terms of border health approval and other governmental approvals. So, um, also looking at downsizing it, um, but still trying to do something that's significant in activating downtown. So it's just everything's in play. It's, they're doing a great job looking at options and being realistic. Because, you know, they, they realize this next summer is gonna be different than last summer and the summer before. But we just don't have enough information yet to really, uh, do anything firm. And, and, and hopefully by April, we'll have better information.
Thank you. Thank you for working on that. Let's see, I have a joint issues committee, uh, Denver Regional Council of Governments. We're working on the 2015 Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan. Revitalization Commission?
No report tonight.
Thank you. And Excel Energy Futures?
I was, I'm ready. I'm ready. We met on, uh, January 26th and it was really sort of a goal setting and introduction discussion for the rest of the year. Programs like the Renewable Connect program is being updated. And so that's something to go through filing this year and that's something we'll wanna watch. Excel does have a transportation electrification plan or program. Something we might be able to take some advantage of. Other than that, we're just sort of setting the agenda for the rest of the year. There wasn't a lot of meat in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I think we should add to our list, um, airport noise. If, uh, airport noise has an update, we would love to hear it.
So the, uh, the roundtable had its first meeting in January, uh, mid-January. And, uh, agreed that we're gonna meet monthly. The next meeting is actually next week. The meeting next week will be to elect a chair and a vice chair, select a facilitator on a contract basis. And actually start putting together some kind of work plan. So it's gonna be a slow ramp up, but I'm very encouraged. The people that have been appointed by the various jurisdictions, I think are very capable. And there's a lot of energy behind it. And one of, one of the challenges will be to get the FAA engaged and get representation by the FAA since that will be integral and them actually be able to accomplish anything. So, um, yeah, so maybe we should add this to the list or I could give a quarterly report.
Thank you. Any other matters by members? All right. See, we are adjourned. See you in a couple of weeks.